Both.
We'll call this meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Bird, Henson.
Here.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yeah.
Mormon.
Here.
Hilsa back.
Here.
Williamson.
Yeah.
Instrom.
Here.
Number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
There are none.
Uh, move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hilsa back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Uh, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, public hearing for the consideration of the sale right of way. North South Alley in the thirteen hundred block of West Second Street between the properties of thirteen ten West Second Street and thirteen sixteen West Second Street, Boone, Iowa. Are there any written comments?
I know, sir.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We have a resolution, uh, thirty-two fifty, res- resolution authorizing alley vacation of North South Alleyway between thirteen ten West Second Street and thirteen sec- sixteen West Second Street.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hilsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Uh, B, public hearing for a request of a zoning change of parcels of property generally described as follows. Uh, the northeast intersection of U.S. Highway thirty and Corporal St. Drive, uh, Boone, Iowa, from A one agricultural to M four general industrial. Are there any written comments?
I know, sir.
Are there any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Please come to the gates and state your name.
So I'm a clerk, Midwest Equine Line, twenty-six fifteen East Gate Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to to bring this up. So really, my my first question is, is this hundred and two acres or hundred, how many acres are being rezoned at this time? Is it really a viable location for this particular industry? Um, my next comment was, there's a traffic study that's not been done. I I guess it's been done, but we don't have access to it. Um, has anybody, have you guys seen this information?
This will be for co- public comment only, so not question.
So if there is information on the traffic study that is done, that would be some viable information to be before this committee at this point in time. Um, so currently they're showing an ingress for truck traffic, uh, to the north of Nidah Togo, I believe. Um, that land, I do not believe, is owned by the city or currently has a road or anything. So how can you include that in a plan when there's no plan for that?
This public hearing is for the rezoning?
I I understand that, but you're, there's reasons for these questions, and I understand. But how can you rezone a landlocked piece of ground that really is, at this point, only accessible with for some farm equipment off of Highway thirty at this point? So you have to have access at some point, some mechanisms. I'd also like to point out that on the rezoning request, it does request a plan that is right on the zone, and you have to slide a plan. They've provided a plan that I I don't see as viable. So that would have to be considered because it's requested with the zoning request. So, and and I've I've been told multiple times there won't be increased truck traffic on East Gate because it's really not designed for it. This afternoon, and I do appreciate the some the information that's been shared with you. And we're talking, uh, on the plan that's been drawn and submitted. While it may not be the plan that will come before the planning committee ultimately, that they're showing approximately three hundred car passes on East Gate a day, which is well in excess, I think, of what it's capable of of holding. And what we're talking about here, if you're going to put that piece of ground into a Daisy plant, there's, uh, these are numbers, they may not be exact, but approximately a hundred and thirty bulk trucks a week in there. And I took that in half, about sixty refrigerator trucks going out of there a week, and then approximately fifteen supply trucks. But my number comes out of about a hundred and ninety-five trucks a week. Okay, so you double that, that's four hundred passes of semis that's going to have to come down a road that's not there and on to Sneddon. Okay, and that's coming right in on to Sneddon, right across from where we have a new elementary school, and it's coming right across from where an area that's going to be developed for housing at that point in time, which seems like that's a pretty good pinch point between industrial area and residential area. So so those those are some major concerns that are simply on on the traffic at this point in time.
Go ahead, you have.
On the on the traffic a- aspect. Um, you know, this this, to me, this this council needs the information as you go forward, and it's it's relevant now just as much as it's relevant later on down the road. Sned is already a mess, it's already backed up at times, it's it's, you know, it's.
Okay, anything, any further comments?
Yes, I do, I will let you know when I.
Bring.
Yep. Um, and I do appreciate, but I'm not quite there, sir. So the rezoning meeting on your rezoning quest, demonstrate compatibility is one of the major keys, okay? And I've been told multiple times that, yes, my hospital is sitting in M four. We also sat in this room several years ago with the city council, and the city council said, we want you here, we know you're an equine hospital, and they, whatever the correct legal terminology is, they allowed me to have horses and everything at that location. So the city council, I I didn't sneak in there and build an equine hospital, okay, it's, I mean, that's not as smart, we're aware of it. And while I'm M four, I am in the equine hospital, and I, an equine hospital is questionably compatible. And I would say, my answer is it's not compatible, but I would, you know, potentially, maybe we can be compatible. But an equine hospital is not very compatible with heavy industry. Uh, lights, noise, ruckus twenty-four seven, um, reef- reefer trucks sitting there with diesel motors running twenty-four seven. It's just, I'm not sure that that is compatible. And compatibility is a very, it's written right on the request, it's a, it's a key part of all of this. The staff recommendation is that it will fit, will fit. It does not mean that it should fit, okay, but it can fit. Those are two very different statements. So the the plan, which was requested with the rezoning, really is, I don't see it as being viable based on traffic reasons solely. And then there's the other issue of compatibility with an equine hospital. So those are, those are my concerns. And so at this point in time, this council can vote and will vote, I assume, okay? But you're lacking information on us, there's traffic information, et cetera. So your options, you can vote yes, you can vote no, and you can pay. Those would be your options, and if you're voting to proceed forward, knowing there's more information out there, I think that's just, I'm not sure that that's fair. We need, we need the information when we make these decisions.
So your comments.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Any other public comments? Seeing none, this public is closed. C, public hearing to consider granting of an easement along Corporal Rogerson Drive, Interstate Power and Light Company. Are there any written comments?
No, sir.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We have now, uh, resolution thirty-two fifty-one, resolution authorizing the execution of an easement between Interstate Power and Light Company and the city of Boone.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hilsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
D, public hearing on the proposition to authorize loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligations of the city thereunder. Uh, one point seven million water revenue capital loan notes. Are there any written comments?
Yes, sir.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. You have item one, uh, thirty-two fifty-two resi- resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of note, uh, not to exceed one point seven million dollars.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Hilsa back? Williamson?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
E, public hearing on the proposition to authorize a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the allegations of the city thereunder, uh, seven hundred eighty thousand dollars in sewer revenue capital. Are there any written comments? Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We have now thirty-two fifty-three resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and issuing notes.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hilsa back?
Yes.
F, uh, thirty-two fifty-eight, resolution fixing date of September third, twenty twenty-four at six P M. from, for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement on for a commercial project with Prairie Place LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Instrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hilsa back? Williamson?
Yes.
G, thirty-two fifty-nine, resolution fixing date of September third, twenty twenty-four at six P M. for a public hearing on the proposal to enter a development agreement for a residential project with Prairie Place LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hilsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Item four, public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing no public comments, I will move on to item five, reports of standing committees. A, policy administration, Williamson.
No report tonight.
Uh, B, public safety and transportation, Hilsa back?
I report, Your Honor.
C, utility committee, Instrom.
Uh, we just have one thing on here, um, resolution thirty-two fifty-four, I'm going to hand this over to Bill, he can give us the the minimal stuff on it, so. Sure, thank you, sir. So you're aware we have a contract with U.S. Water, they manage our wastewater and our water facilities. Um, as we work through the improvements that we're going to make down there, we are applying for SRF loans. The SRF loans have some requirements, um, on contracts that we have. They reviewed the contract with U.S. Water and determined that it wasn't a professional qualified contract, that a new, a few changes need to be made. Uh, the main change was section five point five of the agreement, um, where they were allowed to receive ten percent of any savings that they had, that they made at the plants while running them. We've been through two years of the contract, run our third, and they have not exercised that. Uh, they would have been, uh, entitled to some, but they have not exercised that. That's one of the things of our contract that our attorneys, uh, do not like, and it needs to be changed so that we qualify for this SRFs. So s- some of the savings that Andrea, uh, figured were around thirty-six thousand dollars that they saved, and there were some others in another area. So working with Aaron Voss from U.S. Water, we determined that, uh, adding five thousand dollars to their base contract for wastewater where the savings were, covered that, and then they, uh, were agreeing that they would remove that from the contract, so now for here forever, they will not be able to collect ten percent on any savings because it can't be in the contract. And so we initially signed a five-year contract, and we've completed two, so they're in year three, and so since we opened the contract, they asked, uh, as part of theirs, if they, we could just extend the fo- contract additional two years, so we're at five years. Um, they have been a really good company for us, there are no major concerns at all, I I do not have any issues with that. Talked with utility prior to the council, they were fine with it as well. So those are the main changes, some of the others are just verbiage that the attorneys wanted, uh, written. Um, so those were reviewed by utility, uh, utility made a recommendation to, well, they approved a recommendation to full council to approve the new contract. It's been reviewed by legal, uh, in fact, it's been reviewed by legal twice because we got it from Allers and Cooney. And, uh, so we believe we're good, and and we would ask for a motion, uh, to approve this contract.
So moved. Motion?
Second.
Question or questions? Please call the roll.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hilsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Anything further?
Uh, we do have a special meeting on August twenty-ninth to, uh, talk about a water study that we have a draft of. Um, so if there's any, that'll be it, uh, from two to four on the twenty-ninth, that's it.
Thank you.
I think you're going to send it out electronically to council, right?
Yes, uh, the clerk's office will get an agenda and send it out, yes, sir.
Like two hundred and fifty pages of easy reading.
Does that give you enough time to read that?
Right, so, if I could add, I will send those out to the rest of the council. If you want a hard copy, we can certainly get you one, but I'll send out, uh, the electronic versions of them to you tomorrow for your reading.
Thank you. Very good. Uh, D, economic development, back to Mormon.
We had a meeting prior to this council meeting where we approved two downtown incentive grants, one for high bridge pilting and the other one for modern dress, so, um, uh, they'll be making some improvements to their buildings, which is exciting, so. Um, the resolution, I will turn that over to Andrea.
Um, this resolution is for the catalyst grant for ten oh three Marshall Street. Um, basically, it's just the agreement, she was awarded, uh, the hundred thousand dollar grant, um, so they just need us to sign up on it.
So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hilsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Um, six department reports, building official, Dave.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, as we're all aware, uh, Daisy Brands has, uh, requested a zoning change, uh, for two parcels east of the R.L. Fisher Park. Um, I believe up on the screen is the conceptual drawing of the, um, plant. Um, they're requesting a change from A one agricultural to an M four, uh, general industrial. Um, if you look at the R.L. Park, uh, the majority of that area is already, uh, zoned M four. Uh, city staff, um, when we look at that, obviously, we believe that it fits that general area. Uh, it's just an expansion of the M four zone that is there currently. Um, we took this to planning and zoning, uh, beginning of the week, and they looked at this plan, they did vote, um, to recommend the zoning change, uh, with six voting, yes, and one abstention on that. And I'd be happy to ask for, answer any questions, and if not, we would ask for any motion.
We're going to think that's a, later on.
Right.
Yeah, it's later on in the agenda.
Okay, very good, sir. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have on this. Our numbers in question, uh, total of sixty-two acres, thirty-one acres apiece.
Thanks. Anything else?
Thanks, Dave.
Good. Uh, B, city attorney, Jim.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Uh, D, director of Public Works, Wayland.
Real quickly, I think everybody's seen the progress downtown, uh, the press release that went out on the traffic control I swung through this morning first thing, and everything changed like it was supposed to on the press release, I think you did a very good job. Corey, Corey Tilges with Manats himself personally was out at two o'clock in the morning moving everything and setting it all up, so it it transitioned smoothly. They removed the crosswalks, everything looked really good, and, uh, can't wait to see what's done and out of that area. And played by part of next week, we have some paint on the streets and everything's set forth.
I'm not getting that many complaints, you must be doing something right.
Done a very good job of communicating.
I mean, really, because it is, it means it's for a lot of people.
And I know he's taken a lot of personal.
Taken a lot of interest. Time into assuring that he's doing what he can.
So we appreciate it. Going well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, D, library, Jamie? And you guys have a survey out, it looks like, too. Yeah.
It will be out in the city's newsletter in September, but if you want to take it online now, that would be great.
Thank you. Uh, E, park director, Mike?
Thank you, um, I just want to let you know that, uh, our, I I heard from the playground equipment folks, and we're scheduled for delivery for Franklin Park, uh, August, the week of August twenty-sixth, but they have moved back installation till the end of September. Um, I have a quick pool update. The pool will close to the public on the twenty-fifth, and they'll have the dogs win the twenty-sixth. Five dollars a dog. A lot of them. Um, and part of my duties as the urban forester, I go around and do a windshield survey of the trees, which I started this morning, looking at all the street trees and, uh, looking for hazardous trees and, I mean, things that need to be either contracted or by our department, our department. And, uh, I was, uh, Perry and S.E.H. has submitted, um, requests for RFQs for, uh, cool painting. Since we've had some interest, so, which is why.
Question, how are the, uh, twenty-nine new trees that we planted, are they all, are most of them making it?
For the most part, most of them are making it, um, I do see where some could be pruned, you know, take some of the dead off. I think there's one that needs to be relocated. I don't know how it moved, it must have broken things, but it did move a little bit, so.
But most of them have survived because they.
They're doing pretty good.
Okay.
Wasn't your arborist going to take care of that?
Yeah, I connected here fully to.
Ruin them and.
He's got the next three years.
Right.
Yeah, he was going to take care, yeah.
Will he move that old tree?
I haven't, not so much, has he?
He did, and, uh, it had a bit of sinus infection, so.
It's in the works, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Will he move that tree, though?
All I ask is.
Okay, yeah.
Will this?
Hey, good. All right, thank you. Um, recreation director, Nate?
Good evening, uh, council, city staff, citizens, good to see you, glad to be here. Uh, just wanted to give you an update, I am, uh, getting the lay of the land, as it were, uh, from many citizens and city staff and, uh, youth groups, uh, civic groups, and I have many more meetings scheduled to go and do. Um, met with school, got to meet a gentleman, got to talk to our Boone County, uh, uh, reserves bureau, uh, Little League, soccer, wrestling, the list goes on, there's a lot more to be had, of course, and, uh, just trying to see how we can be helpful and, uh, utilize. Doing that, if you have any questions or concerns, please let me know.
Have you decided there needs to be two of you to get it?
I I probably weigh enough.
Oh.
No, uh, still, still trying to.
A lot.
Get the lay of the land and and figure things, things out and, uh, see how we can be, uh, an asset to put everything out here.
Thank you. Uh, G, engineer, Bill?
No report, sir.
Uh, H, public safety chief, Adam.
Good morning, Your Honor, before we get to my item, I really want to thank, uh, Public Works, uh, they're out here, and you can see all the, the work they're doing in front of the, uh, city hall and fire station. Um, the road in front of the fire station, as we had to get bigger trucks, uh, we're pretty hard on that road, and that hard, that road's deteriorating, so I really want to thank Wayland for getting out there and, uh, fitting that into our budget, or into his budget and schedule and those kind of things, so. Uh, second thing I have is, uh, last Friday, um, I received a, uh, notification email from the, uh, assistance to firefighter grant, uh, which we got approval from you folks back in, uh, March to apply for, and we were awarded ninety-four thousand dollar grant uh, to to install a vehicle exhaust system. Uh, a vehicle exhaust system basically is a hose system that goes to the side of our trucks and, uh, pumps and, uh, and pipes the exhaust out, the, the, uh, building. Uh, the biggest, the biggest benefits with those is, obviously, we get rid of any of the carcinogens, um, it helps with our gear, we have about, uh, two-thirds of our gear sits outside of the, uh, in the station just wide open, so when the diesel exhaust fumes sit on there, that, that, that all gets on the gear, and so that'll help clean that up. Um, it is a required five percent match, which is about forty-seven hundred dollars is is our, um, portion of it. Um, it is not budgeted, I had a conversation, um, with city administrator Scare, and this was, uh, this, you know, this was discussed way back in March when we applied for this, that there was a chance that we would get this, and, uh, uh, we'll try to work on the budgeting numbers and and get back at a later time, but I do have a short, uh, period of thirty days to be able to accept that, uh, grant, accept or deny, and, uh, I would look for a motion, um, hopefully for approval of accepting that grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? I would entertain any questions about it.
I think it's awesome that we got it, awarded it, so. Please call the roll.
Hilsa back?
Yep.
Williamson?
Yes.
Sorry.
Instrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Thank you. Chief Weble is not here, Sergeant Slate. No report, Your Honor. Sir? Uh, I, assistant, uh, assistant city administrator, Grant. Uh, city administrator?
Nothing further, sir.
Six. Uh, number seven, consent agenda, uh, agenda, all items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion, there will be no separate discussion on these items unless a request is made prior to the time council voted on the motion.
Bill moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hilsa back?
Yes.
Number eight, ordinances, A, first reading, reading ordinance twenty-three oh nine to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the all-terrain and off-road vehicles ordinances, amending chapter seventy-seven.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Instrom?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hilsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Uh, B, first reading ordinance twenty-three ten to rezone parcels of property generally described as below, uh, from A one agricultural district to M four and amend the official zoning map.
So moved.
Second.
Else questions? Please call the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hilsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yeah.
Okay, number nine, uh, mayor's comment, well, we finally had the public, uh, unveiling of our main street designations, and thanks to everybody who came out to that, it was a, is a good event. A lot of people came in the middle of the day, I was kind of surprised at how many people showed up, but there was a walking tour with Debbie Durham that went to four different businesses. Uh, The Hive, Mrs. Slaversworth, Sons from Miller Press, and, uh, Sixth Street Underground slash Rochatato. And suffice it to say, every single location she went to, she was blown away by the ingenuity of our business owners downtown, and really the vibrancy that they've been putting into, um, our, our downtown and their businesses in particular. Uh, so I'm glad that she got to came, come and see all of that firsthand. That, those are my comments. Number ten, council members' comments.
Just a quick question, are we meeting on the second?
Oh, uh, the, the meeting for Labor Day will be pushed one day until the first Tuesday of.
So third?
So third.
Anniversary?
Yes. If you have to be at.
No, I'll be.
Are you going to bring your wife to council?
Yeah, that's a.
Yeah, I'm just kidding. So, yeah, we'll bump it to.
It's a Monday holiday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Want to remind everybody that the last Knights on the Green event will be September, first Friday in September, sixth.
Sixth?
Sixth. Okay, September, thank you.
It's going to be on.
We're saying, it's going to be downtown, we're going to be back, so. Wayland assured me everything would be done.
Good.
So we're good, go.
Car show weekend.
Yeah, and a car show's the weekend before, so, yeah, it's going to be exciting, so.
Other council member comments? Uh, we did have a public comment, I'll, I'll allow a quick comment, but in the future, if you have something that's not on the agenda, we have an item number four. Um, start, yeah, please state your name.
I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for doing a great job, approving all the money for our streets. Boone looks good. I'm more racist now, you guys did a great job, I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Um, now we'll move on to item eleven, uh, there's a closed session pursuant to Iowa code, section twenty-one, five one C, Um, now we'll move on to item eleven, uh, this is closed session pursuant to Iowa code, section twenty-one, five-one C, to discuss strategy with council in a matter that is presently in litigation, where disclosure could be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in the Boones, of that litigation. So moved.
Motion, um...
Yes.
Please call the roll.